I'm a student at Harvard.
MIT.
Cal Tech.
Columbia.
Our advantage? Support at home, plus great teachers and programs at Orange County Public Schools. Check out what's available for your child.
There are magnet programs, advanced placement and honors classes, and guidance counselors who help us choose the right courses.
There are dual enrollment classes with Valencia College, so students can earn college credit while in high school.
OCPS has programs for every type of learner, pre-kindergarten through adult.
You won't believe what you can do through Orange County Public Schools.
For more information, visit the website at ocps.net or call 407-317-3200.
Here's a question for every parent out there. If you could fast-forward 20 years to see how your kid's doing in life, would you do it? Well, we can't time travel yet, but we can see the future better with the new Common Core State Standards in our schools. They set clear goals for every stage of learning, and they're the same for everyone, no matter what zip code you're in. So you can be sure your student is really grasping what she needs to know to get to graduation and beyond. Find out how it all works at CommonCoreWorks.org.
All right, let me go ahead and call this meeting of the Orange County School Board to order. I want to say welcome to everybody and welcome back from spring break.
Your mic's not on.
Can you hear me?
There you go.
Okay. I want to welcome everybody back from spring break and welcome to the Orange County School Board. Tonight, we've invited a representative from Curriculum Services to join us because the district is participating in, as you may have noticed, from Ponce de Leon. Viva Florida 500. This is a statewide initiative led by the Florida Department of State to highlight Florida's 500th anniversary this year. Under the leadership of Dr. Anna Diaz, Chair for the Viva Florida 500 Committee, and in collaboration with Curriculum Services, OCPS has been putting emphasis on and honoring the history of Florida. Janie Phelps, K-12 Social Studies Specialist, please come to the podium and lead us in a moment of silence in our pledge of allegiance.
Please stand and bow your heads for a moment of silence. Thank you. And now the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you, Ms. Phelps. We also want to thank the rest of the committee, which is organizing all of the district's activities surrounding Viva Florida 500. So if you could, please stand when I call your name. The Chair of the OCPS Viva Florida 500 Committee, Dr. Anna Diaz. Dr. Diaz? If you could remain standing. And our fellow members, Dr. Ina Schmuck. Dr. Schmuck. Dr. Kimberly Stanky. Dr. Stanky. Natalie Stevens. Is Natalie with us tonight? Scott Evans. Maggie Russell. Janie Phelps. Michelle Bergerin. Forgive me. Michelle. George Perro. I haven't seen George. And Kathy Marsh. Where are you, Kathy?
Yeah.
Thank you. And I'm embarrassed to admit this, I work with them all the time and call them by first name, so if I mutilated your last name, forgive me. Also, I would like to have community members also be recognized. And the first individual I'm going to name, you will find no more committed, passionate advocate for the 500th Florida anniversary, and that is the Chair of the 500th Florida Discovery Council, Colonel Dennis Freitas. Dennis? And he is joined by his co-chair, Palmaro Albina. Palmaro, welcome. Thank you so much for being here tonight. Colonel Freitas has invited with him two guests, and they are true descendants of Ponce de Leon. Welcome historians John Brown Ice and Carmen Brown Muniz. And I hope I pronounced her right. And John has actually written a book on Ponce de Leon, and he is the... Help me out here again, Carmen. How many great-grandson of Ponce de Leon? Twenty-seventh great-grandson and the twenty-eighth great-granddaughter of Ponce de Leon. Well, I want to thank all of you for your wonderful work on this project and for helping us commemorate this very, very important anniversary of the discovery of Florida. Also, in honor of Viva Florida 500, Governor Rick Scott is sending a videotape message to OCPS that will be shown on all of our schools for students and staff. The district also has a very nice display of artwork in the lobby, you may have noticed, representing Viva Florida 500. And some of the additional educational pieces in the project include morning announcement factoids on all of our school PA systems, a VA Florida 500 video, and a photo contest, as well as a Florida Geography Awareness Week, and much, much more. And for a history and geography geek like me, this is heaven. I would love to participate in that. That sounds awesome.
Whatever I say, my father and the others may be here soon. I would like for you to pretend to be one of my tribe and all say, "Woo-hoo-hoo!" Yes? And stomp your feet to sound as if a hundred men are charging this way. Let us try this one time. My father and the others may be here soon. Woo-hoo-hoo-hoo-hoo! Oh, very good. Now, please, remain very still and quiet. I must hide among you so the man will not find me. Woo!
The natives that I have encountered, another mysterious island, have been extremely hostile to my comrades, have I? Yes. I am quite relieved that this one chose to flee. But now, I find myself lost in a strange new world. My name is Juan Ponce de Leon, and I claim this land in the name of His Majesty King Ferdinand of Spain. Yes, but what must I call this new place? Could this place be the island of my quest? No, this cannot be the island of Bimini, for it is much too large. But I'm sure, quite sure, that this is indeed an island. But it is a fair and glorious land, is it not? The crystal-clear waters, the flat and even land. Oh, and look at all the flowers. Perhaps this is a new land, a new island. Yes, that is it! But what must I call it? Hmm. The vegetation, the beautiful flowers. I know. In honor of the Easter holiday, I will call this new land La Florida. Now, I wonder where that maiden may have run off to. She's very elusive, is she not? Now, where could she be? Woo-hoo-hoo-hoo-hoo! Ah! Oh, no, no, no. Please, please, I come in peace. I do not mean to harm you. I look for food and water.
I can give you food and water, but you must come with me. My father and the others may be here soon. Woo-hoo-hoo-hoo-hoo!
Ah, I cannot leave my men behind. I must wait under my ship. Well, perhaps, perhaps, I could call to my men with this. Perhaps not.
Please do not call your tribe. I will be at peace. Let us begin again. I am called La Petunia. I come from the native tribe who live on this land.
And I am Juan Ponce de Leon. I come from Spain. I am in search for gold. I am also in search for the island of Bimini. I am also in search of gold. Did I happen to mention that I'm in search of gold?
This Spain, where is this Spain? And how did you get here?
Why, Spain is a country in Europe. I am a Spanish conquistador. I sailed here with Christopher Columbus on his second voyage to the New World in 1493.
What is this New World?
Why, this is the New World. We come from the Old World, and we have only just recently discovered these new lands.
Yes, indeed, you do look old. But we are not new. My people have been here very long time. Other tribes have been here many years as well. This Christopher Columbus, is he old like you?
Well, yes, he is from the Old World. He is a very great man.
My father is a great man. He is chief of our village, and I am his daughter.
The daughter of a chief. Perhaps she may be able to help me find gold. Your father must love you very much. Does he shower you with gifts? Does he give you gold?
What is gold? I have never heard of this.
It is what we use to produce food and shelter and power. With gold, many great things can be had with gold.
It is much too hard to eat. Will it grow into tree if I plant it? Does it produce sweet fruit?
No. We use it in exchange for food and shelter. With it, you can buy all the food that you want.
This gold must be very valuable.
Extremely valuable. This land is very beautiful. Is there gold here?
No, there is no gold here. We produce our own food. We hunt for meat, and we grow corn and peppers, potatoes and tomatoes. What kind of food do you eat?
Well, we also hunt for meat. We also raise cattle and meat for meat. We also have a very sweet fruit that we call an orange. Some say that this fruit brings great health. If I give you an orange, will you show me where there is gold?
Do not be silly. There is no gold here. But if you give me orange, I will protect you from my tribe. My father and the others may be here soon. Woo-hoo-hoo!
Yes, please, take the orange. Protect me. By this, I've noticed all the flowers that grow here. It reminds me of a place we call Puerto Rico. Puerto Rico means rich spot. When I first discovered gold in Puerto Rico, I was named its first military governor. After a while, Diego Columbus, the son of Christopher Columbus, took my place. Although King Ferdinand allowed Diego to take my position, he acknowledged my loyalty, and he allowed me to search for the island of Bimini.
What is island?
What is an island? An island is land completely surrounded by water.
But this is not an island. This is just land.
Not an island, indeed. We have been on a journey, sailing from San Juan up through the Bahama Islands. And every time we stopped, people said that there was no gold, but that Bimini was near. So we sailed along, and after a while, we spotted land. We sailed on for a few more days, and then we discovered this, and we landed here. Now, I know this cannot be the island of Bimini, but I am quite certain that this here is an island.
But this is not an island. This is just land. There is great water where the sun rises in the morning. There is great water where the sun goes to sleep at night. And it is true, there is great water in this direction, but you can travel many, many days in this direction, and you will not find great water.
This way is north? Ships are to the eastern shore. If this way is north, then there must be water to the north.
I tell you again, there is no great water this way. Our people travel great distances, and our mighty sun will not let us get lost. It appears even with map, men will continue to get lost.
It is quite certain that I'm lost. Will you help me? Lead me back to my ship?
Perhaps I will lead you back to your ship? But what will you give me in exchange for my services?
I already gave you an orange.
I do not care for your orange. My people have plenty to eat here in our land, this La Florida.
Well, what can I give you that will help you lead me back to my ship?
It is true, you have shown me many things, but I do not remember why these things are important or useful. Please, tell me what they are again.
I will describe what is in my bag. I will need your help. Audience, please, assist me. Once you know what the item is after I'm describing it, please feel free to shout out the answer. You understand? This is flat, made of paper, and it shows you where to go most of the time. Ah, yes, map, very good. Now, this item is soft, sometimes squishy, and it is juicy. Yes, orange, very good. And this item is round, flat, and extremely valuable. Yes, gold. Now, what will you take to lead me? Help me get back to my ship?
It is clear that your map is useless. I do not like the food you eat, and I do have no need for your valuable gold. I have no use for any of these things. Juan Ponce, what is this that hangs from your side?
Like this? Well, this... This was a knife. This, where we use it to cut rope, to carve wood, and at sometimes to protect ourselves.
This knife may be useful to my people. I will take your knife and lead you back to your ship.
Now, just one more thing before we go. Are you sure you have never seen gold?
I tell you again, there is no gold here. But I have heard tales of this gold. My people tell of a tribe that know of this gold. They are called the Colusa.
Ah, the Colusa.
But first, you must return to your ship. Then you can continue your trip south, where you can find the Colusa who know of this gold.
To the south, you say?
Yes. I must lead you back to the ship.
Ah, yes, of course, to the ship.
Yes, then to the south.
Ah, to the south.
To the Colusa.
The Colusa and gold, right?
And gold.
Ah, yes.
Thank you for that wonderful presentation. There's nothing richer than seeing six police chiefs go, "Woo-hoo-hoo-hoo-hoo!" Please, Anna Sheriff. Please welcome Paul Wenglowski, Curator of Education at the Orange County Regional History Center.
Good evening, and thank you. My name is Paul Wenglowski. I'm the Curator of Education at the Orange County Regional History Center. And if you enjoyed this presentation, this is just one of the many programs that we bring to schools each and every day. This short 10-minute skit is actually part of a 45-minute presentation that will be going to all different Orange County Public Schools within the 2013-14 school year. And it's also part of our Viva Florida 500 celebration, which opens this Thursday, February... or, excuse me, April 11th, with Dr. Gary Mormino speaking about 500 years of eating in Florida. And if you have... if you would like to find out more about the History Center, please visit our website at thehistorycenter.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wenglowski. Now, as a school board member who helped lead the district's participation in this effort, District 2 School Board Member Darryl Flynn will read the proclamation, which is set to be approved tonight on the school board consent agenda. Ms. Flynn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As a third-generation Floridian, I'm delighted to be able to read the proclamation. The proclamation reads, "Whereas in early April of 1513, the Spanish explorer Juan Ponce de Leon set foot on the lush land today known as Florida, which he claimed for Spain and named La Florida, meaning feast of flowers. And whereas this year is the 500th anniversary of Ponce de Leon's discovery, it is a fitting time to recognize the many cultures and peoples that have enriched the development of this unique state dating back 12,000 years to the early Native Americans. And whereas Florida is a rapidly growing state of people with a multitude of backgrounds and is the location where the world's cultures began to unite in 1513 and grew into the great nation we know today as the United States of America. And whereas Florida's landmark 500th-year anniversary is being commemorated across the state through Viva Florida 500, we in Orange County will draw inspiration from 500 years of Florida being a state of exploration, discovery, and innovation. And whereas Viva Florida 500 reintroduces Florida as the gateway to the Americas, reminding the world of the state's historic role in international trade and investment, Florida's business-friendly environment and dedication to providing our young people with strong educational opportunities and pride in their city, state, and nation, be it resolved that Orange County Public Schools does hereby proclaim 2013 as Florida's 500th-year anniversary." And it will be signed by our Chair and Superintendent.
Thank you. Board members, if you could, we're going to sign the proclamation, and if you could all come and sort of form a ring behind us, we're going to get some photographs to commemorate the signing of the proclamation. Ms. Flynn pointed out to me a neat factoid about the pictures. Do you want to share that with the audience?
That they've been taken by... Yes, Kath, Ms. Marsh, would you?
Certainly. The photographs that you're witnessing there are photographs taken by our Orange County Public School teachers, primarily our history teachers, as they take their jaunts around our state so they can share photos with their students as they learn more about the great state of Florida.
All right. Well, I'm sure everybody has also recognized that our room is full of our local law enforcement partners tonight, and I want to thank them on behalf of the board for coming down tonight. I know how busy each and every one of you is, and it just means so much to you that you're here. They are here tonight at our invitation because we are recognizing the service that each and every one of our local departments has provided to Orange County Public Schools, especially since the beginning of 2013. It is still fresh in all of our memories, that horrible school tragedy that occurred in Newtown, Connecticut. And security in and around our schools has become even more important, something that all of our parents have let us know, as well as our community. Even before our Sandy Hook shooting, Orange County Public Schools took seriously all perceived threats to student safety. And any incident or threat is dealt with swiftly by activating Safe School Plans and calling in our school resource officers. But since that shooting in December, our partnership with law enforcement has grown even stronger. What some in the public may not know is that our school resource officers in our schools are assigned by our excellent law enforcement partners. And tonight, we've invited them here to show our appreciation for the protection they give students and staff each and every day. So I would like to begin by introducing each department chief in no particular order. And when I announce your name, if you could please come forward, and the board would like to hand you a certificate of appreciation and to thank you for all your service. And I'm going to ad lib here a little bit for a moment here. The contributions that all of our cities and the sheriff's office have provided us is nothing short of remarkable. Virtually every one of our law enforcement officers and departments stepped up their patrols, stepped up their police presence at our schools, were incredibly vigilant, and helped, more than we could have ever done as a school board, reassure the public that our students were safe. So, gentlemen, you and your departments, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts. First, Orange County Sheriff Jerry Demings. Sheriff Demings? I'll tell you what I'm going to do, is I think I'm going to call all of your names, and then we'd like you, if you don't mind, if you'd come up. We have a small certificate of appreciation. It seems so inadequate for all you and your departments have done. But also, we're joined by Orlando Police Chief Paul Rooney. Winter Park Police Chief Brett Raely. Apopka Police Chief Robert Manley. Akoi Police Chief Charlie Brown. Mayland Police Chief Doug Ball. And Eatonville Police Chief Gene Burnall. And board members, I think that... I know I would. I think we would all love to get a photo with our police chiefs. So rather than y'all, let's come on around the front of the dais, and we'll hand the certificates out and get a photo with our local chiefs.
This evening, I will walk you through both the district's scorecard as it pertains to HR and the extended scorecard, which focuses on issues of importance to the district within the HR department. Human Resources focuses on being helpful and responsive. Their goal is to assure all areas throughout the district are staffed with high-performing and dedicated team members. Key performance indicators track all administrative and instructional employment categories. Based on the data, work to make the hiring process more streamlined and provide a positive experience for all internal and external users. The settlement agreement also addresses the importance of a diverse team in all areas. An annual report to the board focuses on how well our district is doing as we continue to fill positions. The district's scorecard specifically addresses fill rates pertaining to substitutes, length of time to fill administrative vacancies, and our ability to staff instructional positions at the beginning of each semester. We're also concerned that we're hiring highly qualified teachers and staff for all vacancies. When an instructional vacancy occurs, whether it's long-term, such as a medical leave, a maternity leave, or a vacancy, or short-term, that's a day or two just due to personal or sick leave, we want to have all positions filled by a qualified substitute teacher. Our goal is to show a 98% or higher fill rate for all schools. OCPS outsources this service utilizing Kelly Services. We maintain a high level of communication with them, whether we're discussing strategies we want utilized, data regarding our fill rates, or other issues which may occur. The data of our percentages of requests for fill rate utilizing substitute teachers is currently at 98.6% overall. You'll notice in the green areas, when we've met the goal of 98% or higher, and also those in red where we have not met that goal. You can see from the chart that we do well meeting this goal, but there are always areas that need improvement. ESE, an alternative education center, is waver in where we are with meeting this goal. We've even had times throughout the year when we dipped below the goal in all areas except vocational technical centers. We continue to monitor the effectiveness of this service. Before Kelly Services, our percentages of filled substitute needs was much lower than we currently have. In fact, in 2005, 2006, it was 79.3%, quite a big difference. We're developing a special training for ESE substitutes, which is going to launch for this upcoming school year. These substitutes will learn strategies and working successfully with ESE students. The next target we have our eye on is striving for a fill time of 30 days or less with all administrative vacancies. We've looked at ways to streamline the hiring process, increasing our pool of eligible candidates, and training managers on e-recruiting and the HR processes of hiring. HR is also working on placing the school-based administrative hiring into e-recruiting. We have a Hiring Standards and Guidelines Committee, and they continue to look at all phases of hiring, but also administrative hiring in that process, and making recommendations for it. Timeliness, process efficiency, and finding the right person for the position is extremely important. Quarterly, we track how well we do in meeting our goal of hiring within a 30-day window. The 30-day window begins at the time the position is posted, and it runs until the time the candidate has been offered and accepts the position. You can see from our latest quarterly data that both the school-based and district-based vacancies are filled within the 30-day window. Filling instructional vacancies is central to our core business. From recruitment to hire, we're focused on the needs of the schools in order to make sure that the first-day deadlines, or even better, first-day of pre-planning, are met. Vacancies occur throughout the school year, so the recruitment process is an important function, not just during the spring of the year, but all year long. We work with schools to ensure our spring transfers are placed and that they're able to move within the timeframe to allow hiring from outside of our organization. Every effort is made to move the voluntary process of transferring smooth and efficient. This is important. The areas of reading, ESOL, science, foreign languages, ESE, math, and English Language Arts have been identified by the State Board as critical shortage for 2013-14. If the fill rate here meets the target of 100%, the data is highlighted in green. If not, you'll see it in red. We can see that at the beginning of the first semester this year, we had a 99.6% fill rate of our instructional vacancies as we began school. The 1,344 vacancies were calculated from the beginning of the hiring season, which is the end of May, until the July 23 date. Second semester began with a 93.9% fill rate of the positions vacant. The 572 vacancies were figured during the window of time between the September recalculations and January 7, 2013. This supports our need to recruit year-round and work with an increased number of colleges and universities through their student intern programs. We network closely with Valencia, UCF, Seminole State College. They help us by posting jobs for both classified and some instructional. UCF is our primary source for instructional candidates, and the Florida Classic Career Expo involving FAMU and Bethune-Cookman, as well as the Central Florida Employment Council and the Great Florida Teach-In are excellent sources for our recruiting efforts. During spring 2012, we had 257 student interns throughout our system, and of those, 206 submitted applications to Orange County Public Schools. We've also surveyed our interns to determine the types of experiences they've had, and I'm pleased to report to you that those experiences seemed to be very positive. HR has also partnered with internal departments, such as transportation, to hold a job fair, which is what we did last year. And this year, that same job fair may be expanded to include custodial candidates. Future strategies that we'll use will be with social media, Facebook, which will help us to access a billion people whose information will be matched toward the needs that we have. We also are looking into a cloud-based onboarding for our new hires to keep in contact with Highly qualified teachers, we want to make sure that we're at the state level, the state average or above, regarding these highly qualified teachers. Highly qualified for the elementary level means for those teachers with less than one year experience, and that includes art, music, and foreign language. They must be certified in the appropriate subject area and have a passing score on the appropriate subject area exam. For the experienced teacher at the elementary, they must be certified in the appropriate subject level and have a passing score on the appropriate subject area exam, or complete what we call HOUSE, High Objective Uniform State Standard of Evaluation. And this is something that can't be used by ESOL or reading. And for in-state candidates, HOUSE was phased out in '06-'07, but we still continue to use the HOUSE form for those out-of-state candidates, and this helps to determine if they're highly qualified when coming from their previous district out of state. For secondary teachers, it means being certified in the appropriate subject area, with the exception of social science teachers. Social science is a very broad area. The state requires a passing score on the social science subject area exam in addition to being certified in social science. New ESE teachers have to be certified in an appropriate ESE area, have a passing score on an appropriate core academic subject area exam. For the experienced ESE teacher, certified in an appropriate ESE area and have a passing score on an appropriate core academic subject area exam, or complete the HOUSE form. We use the February FTE reporting period as our indicator of the percentage of highly qualified teachers who taught core classes. Core classes refer to English, reading, language arts, math, science, foreign languages, civics, government, economics, arts, history, geography, and elementary education. The updated information for 2013 is based on this year's February FTE. That has already been submitted to the state. However, final data percentages won't be available from the state until August. Therefore, we have only the 2012 data there. For this year, we have 12,827 instructional employees and approximately 9,451 teach core academic subjects requiring being highly qualified. Alternative education teachers have consistently reported with lower percentages for meeting highly qualified requirements due to the mobility of students in and out of the alternative education programs, which result in the need for those teachers to be certified in multiple areas. Due to the difficulty in finding candidates with these multiple certifications and the willingness to work with the high-risk students, our district has been much more flexible with their requirements in the alt-ed areas. Certification Department is also working on a plan to raise that number of highly qualified teachers in alternative centers. And now, the district's score, the extended scorecard. The difference between the district's scorecard and the extended scorecard is that the extended scorecard is a fluid document, and it's used to assess how our managers and our departments are progressing. The goals and objectives might change as the needs of the department or district change. I'm going to speak with you in regard to the HR Extended Scorecard. You have a copy in front of you, board members. I'm going to speak from the order that the plan has in regard to the goals. You'll notice that the first page begins with compensation and targets the goal of high-performing and dedicated team. We always look to maintain competitiveness with our salary schedule by examining how it compares to our contiguous counties. We're always ahead of Seminole, but a little behind Osceola. But we are one of the only districts that has continued to give bonuses and raises throughout the recession. We are one of the leaders in the state for preparing for a tiered salary system with the birth of the Alpha Schedule. You can see verbiage that discusses leapfrogging, and I can explain that to an extent. The leapfrogging part of this is if one of our teachers, say, is at the six-year level, and they complete their sixth year and would normally go to a seven-year step, because we have not had raise situations during some years, they would stay at that six-year salary level. And if you have a person who comes in from the outside and they have seven years of experience, they would come in at the seven-year mark. So that's what leapfrogging means. We have several schools already working off a performance-based compensation schedule due to the multiple TIF grants, that's Teacher Incentive Fund, that we've received. We received TIF I, and that's complete now. TIF II is in its third year, and TIF STEM, we are in its planning year right now. This includes 31 schools who are receiving performance-based pay, and we're working feverishly for this to run through our SAP system. School administrators are awarded further improvement utilizing a baseline average for all school grade points. Teachers are awarded based on teacher evaluation, learning gains, and teacher pick, like PDFs and activities. We have conducted two Reasonable Suspicion Trainings for over 250 administrators. We're also looking to create this training as an online course to improve efficiency in the future. We've had two sessions of ER Best Practices for administrators. It's mandatory if you're in the PNPP program and voluntary for all other administrators. We put out an RFP to get a better price for our drug testing, and we were successful. EDPM is the company that we use, and we're saving between $3 and $5 per test. Reduction in paper processes is dependent on the Building Best Practices project, which is currently on hold, but we're able to add the assessments of food service managers into our SAP. We continue to review and modify the process improvement. Due to the difficulty in finding candidates with these multiple certifications and the willingness to work with the high-risk students, our district has been much more flexible with their requirements in the alt-ed areas. Certification Department is also working on a plan to raise that number of highly qualified teachers in alternative centers. And now, the district score, the extended scorecard. The difference between the district scorecard and the extended scorecard is that the extended scorecard is a fluid document, and it's used to assess how our managers and our departments are progressing. The goals and objectives might change as the needs of the department or district change. I'm going to speak with you in regard to the HR Extended Scorecard. You have a copy in front of you, board members. I'm going to speak from the order that the plan has in regard to the goals. You'll notice that the first page begins with compensation and targets the goal of high-performing and dedicated team. We always look to maintain competitiveness with our salary schedule by examining how it compares to our contiguous counties. We're always ahead of Seminole, but a little behind Osceola. But we are one of the only districts that has continued to give bonuses and raises throughout the recession. We are one of the leaders in the state for preparing for a tiered salary system with the birth of the ALFA schedule. You can see verbiage that discusses leapfrogging, and I can explain that to an extent. The leapfrogging part of this is if one of our teachers, say, is at the six-year level, and they complete their sixth year and would normally go to a seven-year step, because we have not had raise situations during some years, they would stay at that six-year salary level. And if you have a person who comes in from the outside and they have seven years of experience, they would come in at the seven-year mark. So that's what leapfrogging means. We have several schools already working off a performance-based compensation schedule due to the multiple TIF grants, that's Teacher Incentive Fund, that we've received. We received TIF I, and that's complete now. TIF II is in its third year. And TIF STEM, we are in its planning year right now. This includes 31 schools who are receiving performance-based pay, and we're working feverishly for this to run through our SAP system. School administrators are awarded further improvement utilizing a baseline average for all school grade points. Teachers are awarded based on teacher evaluation, learning gains, and teacher pick, like PDFs and activities. We have conducted two reasonable suspicion trainings for over 250 administrators. We're also looking to create this training as an online course to improve efficiency in the future. We've had two sessions of ER best practices for administrators. It's mandatory if you're in the PNPP program and voluntary for all other administrators. We put out an RFP to get a better price for our drug testing, and we were successful. EDPM is the company that we use, and we're saving between $3 and $5 per test. Reduction in paper processes is dependent on the Building Best Practices project, which is currently on hold, but we're able to add the assessments of food service managers into our SAP. We continue to review and modify the process improvement in eRecruit with the assistance of a consultant who began the project. We also meet regularly with our constituents to get feedback from what changes were made and what needs to be tweaked. You can see that additional edits have been added to prevent candidates from submitting an incomplete application. The questionnaire was changed. We added step-by-step instructions and streamlined the review process. HR has 37 key performance indicators that they use, and they've aligned the key performance indicators to the strategic goals. This is just one example that you see here regarding our time to fill. Our goal is to be under 30 days. We meet monthly to determine if they're making the goal, the target, or not, and then discuss any process improvements that need to be made to meet the target. We're in the second year of the Management Leadership Academy. Our first cohort graduated in December and included 33 managers. 30 have continued their second year, and our second cohort of 33 managers began in February. This is an academy that focuses on developing leaders on the business side of the house. It's similar to the two-year program provided to our assistant principals, or what we call PNPP. We've moved PREO out of our compliance department, and it's managed by our senior manager of certification. Offerings of the PREO session are increased during peak hiring season, and this year we're looking at having a big PREO session on one or more Saturdays. We're in the process of developing an electronic training to push out to all of our employees in regard to the proper procedures for filing FMLA. We're also going to be increasing our recruitment in the areas of STEM, reading, and with ESE teachers. And we've had a number of recruitment fairs that we've been to. I think it totals 24 in all. We've, we still have about seven left that we'll be attending. During that time, district contracts are given out or awarded to those candidates that have high qualifications and seem to meet the needs specifically in our STEM areas, reading, ESE, and there are some others that have been granted the district-wide contracts. To date, we have 30 district-wide contracts. Last year, I think we had 32, 25 of whom are still, are working for us. Some of the others had taken other, other positions with other districts after they signed the contract with us. So we're hoping for a few more contracts also to be awarded. When we go to these fairs, we have onsite next-day interviews so we can award contracts if need be right then and there. We also keep the area superintendents, the EADs and principals, very informed. We keep them very involved, and they've participated in some of these. We're also, as I mentioned earlier, going to hold a job fair for bus drivers and custodians. And here you'll see we have another example of one of our KPIs, looking for average days to clear or deny a candidate who acknowledges a criminal history. Our target is seven days to clear. And our second KPI is looking at fingerprint transactions rejected because of quality. Our target is to be less than 2%. I do want to share with you that last year, we had almost a 10% rate, so we have gotten that down to less than the 2%. So we're very happy about that. And that concludes the presentation.
Members of the board, I would, I would add just a couple of points for clarification. Having served on council great city school site review teams all over the country, I will tell you, for human resources and other business operations to have such clear-cut strategies in place and measurable objectives is highly unusual. But if you consider we're a $1.2 billion corporation, $2.5 billion if you include our capital funds, it is a major business. And what we like to stress is that our business operations have to be succinct. They need to be efficient. They need to be precise because it impacts not only through efficiencies and dollars saved, but through services to our core business, which is educating our students. And so while we don't have all green on our scorecard, I will tell you, I always want stretch goals. I never want to see green throughout the scorecard. It means we're not aiming high enough. I am pleased with the progress and the efforts, the sense of urgency in our human resources department. You will rarely hear business terminology such as time to fill, measures such as that that we use. Those are business terms. They help a major corporation run a business. And so we're quite pleased with the progress. We understand we have quite some way to go. I would remind folks, the 97% to 99% fill rate for our substitutes is in comparison to 80% regular fill rate when we were trying to do that on our own. And so we're pleased with how those contracts have been managed as well. Happy to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent. And Ms. Ballmer, thank you so much. That was an excellent presentation. Ms. Flynn?
I just had a quick question on some acronyms. PREO and FMLA. Oh, sorry. Family Medical Leave Act. Okay. That's what I thought.
What is it?
FMLA is Family Medical Leave Act.
And then PREO. P-R-E-O.
Pre-employment orientation.
Okay.
I've always seen PREO.
Yeah, I guess we just use PREO so often, but we don't.
They want to put it like they did with the two.
Thank you.
I just had a couple of questions. Do we do exit interviews when people leave? Yes. I see Carol who has laryngitis, right?
Yes.
Okay. And what, I know you can't speak. I'm sorry. What, what's the most common reason that people, especially instructors, what's the most common reason they leave?
Do you have that? Retirement and spouse relocation. She has a problem this evening with her voice. Otherwise, she would have been presenting some of it.
That's okay. And then my second, oh, sorry.
We've added questions to a form that they use when they, for an exit interview to find out more information from them.
My other question is related to the speed with which you fulfill positions, which is fabulous. But sometimes getting the right people on the bus doesn't happen that fast. So how do you manage that component to make sure you're not necessarily hiring for the warm body, but hiring the right fit for our culture and our goals?
Absolutely. And, and some of that is done, you know, school-based or district-wide. And, and we want to make sure that we have the right people in the right seat on the right bus all the time. But, but I think it goes back to making sure that, for instance, with school-based, we have a really good group of people that we have, we have there all the time. And it's going to be, we haven't always recruited all year long, and that is one of my directions that I've given to our recruiter, is that we want.
So you kind of have a pool based on some of your temp help and some of the other folks that we make?
Now, with district-based, I'm going to tell you, we don't, we don't have that pool like we do with our instructional.
Okay.
I would add to that, Ms. Gould, I think, an important point, and I want to separate for the sake of clarity, administrative and instructional hires. So, and, and you would notice our administrative time to fill sometimes exceeds that because managers understand if they don't have the right fit, then they are able to extend the time and have someone else cover those duties. For instructional hires, it is critical, we know this from national data, it is critical that you hire as early as possible in the spring, in April, and May timeframe. The longer you wait into the summer, the lower your talent pool. The best talent make commitments in spring. And so we really push for those decisions while there is a vast pool of candidates and higher-quality candidates as early in the spring as possible. So a difference there is that you've got to make some decisions if you want the best talent for instructional positions. For management, they can certainly hold off and re-advertise and leave the position vacant if they're looking for the top candidate.
As, as Carol just said, with the Management Leadership Academy, we're also looking to create aspiring leaders and have a group of those candidates there. We'll take them through some training and ready them for administrative positions on the business side.
Thank you, Ms. Gould. Ms. Moore?
Ms. Moore, I particularly like how the KPI is being applied now to HR. That's, and the strategic plan, that's very helpful. And also, in the board report, I found all the surveys and that very, very interesting as you were applying customer service strategies to HR. I just had a couple of questions if, there's several pieces of legislation that would require us to notify parents if their teacher is teaching out of field. And if that, if that passes, I assume you'd come back to us with some changes, and maybe we're going to have to measure that if it becomes law, it's looking like it might. So is that typically, you go with a series of legislative changes and then just adjust in the spring after session?
What we do is, Scott Howard has been very helpful with all of us in the legislative changes, no matter what area we're in, and asks, gives us the legislative changes, each of the chiefs, and asks us what will be done in regard to that. So we take a good look at that and what kind of readjustments have to be made.
Okay. And then the final question, you were talking quite a bit about recruiting, and you mentioned comparing our salary and benefits package to Seminole and Osceola school districts. I was curious if, if there's any material in the packet that compares, you know, has those on some sort of document spreadsheet, and if you have comparisons maybe with some of the more prominent charter companies or private schools so that when we're recruiting the teachers, potential teachers realize what a great place OCP is to work.
Carol, do you want to speak to that? Your, what you have when you go out for recruiting?
We just tell them how much, how much it is and how we, how we, our salary schedule is driven by the contiguous county. And with a lot of our, we try to, I mean, above.
They do give information to the candidates, but only from our district.
Okay. Well, I was just curious, as I know, one of my new schools that opened, it was interesting, so I was speaking with the principal, she had teachers coming back from virtual, from charters, and, you know, I was just curious how many, how much there is going back and forth for staff between all these different choice options today, and if that, it becomes more of a factor as we move forward.
Can you speak to, when I went down to FIU to recruit, Dade County has a freeze on them. So if there are certain candidates in the state that we haven't been able to go yet.
She has been down to FIU just very recently in a recruiting format and was able to do some presentation to them. But Dade County is in a hiring freeze at this point in time. So we felt as if that was a real step ahead for us as far as district-wide contracts were concerned and taking information from the candidates.
All right. Thank you.
Mrs. Gordon?
Yes, thank you. I do want to commend Dr. Palmer also for this great report that your staff put together. I'm just looking at the, on, on the part that you talked about, the data with what percentage of requests for substitute teachers was filled each month. When Dr. Jenkins brought this report in to us upon her returning back to Orange County to give us the idea to outsource the substitute, it really proved to be very beneficial financially to us also, because we were really in a dire strait. We were not filling it. I think you gave a 79%. Can, can you give us, just write this down for me, and then you can come back. Can you give us a percentage of those, those substitute teachers that are filling these positions that are degreed? Because I know that each year it has gone up, and I think that should be included in the report, that the quality of people applying is a higher quality when the board looked at it back in 2000, and then 2003, 2004, trying to figure out. If you can give us an account of the quality of the kind of people, what kind of degrees that they have, because I'm understanding that they do have higher degrees now, which is much better for the children and students of Orange County. Also, when you talked about the data, when you reported 1,344, okay, which was a 99.6%, and you stated that some of the recruiting came from the Florida Classic?
Yes.
Okay, there was a time, which was a B, what is it, Bethune-Cookman University and FAMU, there was a time that staff would travel to all of the African-American Bowl Games throughout the South in order to recruit, and they would also travel to Indiana, which is one of the largest Bowl Games. I would like to know if that still continues so that we can attract a diverse minority group, okay, of African-Americans into Osceola, Osceola, into Orange County. And then I wanted to ask about, we once, when, I know when, he was our only recruiter next to Cleve Henry, I think, oh my gosh, I can't think, he was our Hispanic recruiter, and I think they took a group over to Puerto Rico. And I can't think of his name because.
Javier.
Javier. Is he in the back, back there?
He's right here.
Where is Javier? Oh my God, bless his heart. I remember, we gave him a task to go and bring in thousands of teachers, and I think that he did. So I, I want to know where we're going there, and are we hitting the Hispanic countries to bring in quality educators into the system? And are we going there? And then the Haitian Creole speaking there is beginning to be a major need in Orange County for Haitian Creole educators. They've got to connect because this is where we are lagging behind, because they're, because a lot of them are being considered African-American even though they are not, you know, and do not want to be. They want to be Haitian, Haitians, okay, and Africans that are not African-American. So that, that is a need right there. And I would like to know where you're going there, you know, to other Bowl Games. And then, explain to me the HOUSE form that you talked about, and there was one, one Okay, I think you answered that. The other part is the increased efficiency of hiring and eRecruiting. We're still, everybody has to go online and complete an application. I think that process is very fair. And then I'd like to know how you are getting that out, because I think everybody at this board table has been brought and handed a written resume. And we keep telling them, but based on the law, we, we cannot hire you, but you must follow that. So I want to know how are we really getting it out to the public in the, for those educators that are interested, or others that are interested in employment, that they do not have to bring that resume to the board? But I know Dr. Jenkins had been very nice about saying if they did get it to us, at least get it to board service staff. And then they'll take a look at it because we're looking for quality people. So that's, those are just my questions, and if you can just answer some of them for me, I would be grateful. Thank you.
Okay. I can give you the information on substitute teachers with an associate's degree or higher. This past year, it was 87%, okay? And.
The reason why FIU is feeling this.
Right, right. And then, Ms. Gordon, you talked about making sure that we had diversity as we recruit. One of the things that we looked at was, could we go to some universities that would give us? us some more diversity? And that was why we went to the South, toward the South, to see if we could do some recruiting there for some diversity as well. Although, we didn't go, we didn't go to Puerto Rico, but we thought that if we.
Javier did. Ask him, didn't he go over there and recruit?
Yes.
Didn't Javier?
He did, he did.
He's shaking his head, he did. Brought back some great teachers.
And of course, we're always looking for Haitian Creole.
Okay. Now, I'm not satisfied with your answer for the South with the Bowl Games because you only named one Bowl Game and I'm not, and I just don't think that that is very representative of the diversity that we have within the United States. If we're going to plug in, Mr. Chairman and board members, we really need to plug in to those, the United Negro Colleges that caters to, with education, and thank God that UCF, we're pushing them that they would come up more with educators and especially a diverse group of educators within that arena. So, I just don't think that the FAMU-Bethune Classic is enough because that's home. And I think we need to branch out and get back on the road to recruit. Also, how many of the substitutes have an advanced degree more than an associate? Because when one report was given to the board, most of, it was a high percentage with a bachelor's degree higher.
Absences filled with a bachelor's degree or a degreed substitute teacher, 76%.
Okay, so that has gone up tremendously high. It was like 20%, I think, when we started. It was very, very low.
Well, in 2000, in 2006, '07, which was the first year that we had Kelly Services, it was 62.7%.
All right. So, we have gone up and I think the public needs to know that, that that is a quality service that we receive from Kelly and we thank Dr. Jenkins for bringing that program in to Orange County for us. Thank you so very much.
Yes, I can, I think I can also answer your question in regard to the house form. This is a form that is sent in to the state and they help to look at out-of-state candidates as to whether or not they are highly qualified in the district from which they came.
That's it. That's what I was looking for, the out-of-state candidate. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. Well, I had a kudo, first of all, when we embarked on this customer service initiative. Gosh, I don't know how long ago it was, now eight, nine months. And I just want to thank you, Ms. Palmer and Superintendent and Ms. Kent. I just, you know, I think it's readily apparent to all of us on the board, all that we're doing in the customer service arena. And I think it especially shows in this presentation today and the measures that you've pointed out. And a couple of questions. One is just, I just want to be clear about something because it sort of shocked me, the data, and maybe I shouldn't be and it probably didn't surprise members of the board. But on the slide that showed the number of vacant instructional positions as of January 7th, 2013, reported, it shows 572, of which we filled 94% of them. Is that the norm, that we have that much? Because if you do the math, we have roughly 12,000 instructional personnel. It's close to 5% that empty between the beginning of the school year and the end of the first semester? Is that, does it not surprise everybody else? Ms. Kent, can you speak enough to?
There's a lot of people. Would she speak to the microphone?
She's got a voice issue. She's got laryngitis.
She can't speak. That's why she's not here. Want to come up and try?
Well, no, I feel like the Grinch who stole Christmas. I made you get up there. I'm sorry, Carol.
I just thought it would be more painful for you to listen to me. No, it's okay. A lot goes into that number. It is, it's an alarming number, like you said, something that we definitely will be concentrating on. But we have a lot of retirees during that time, which adds to that number. It's really a two-week period. So, what we're trying to do is project at that time how well we are prepared for the second semester. We also find that during that time in December, because we have that break, that a lot of people are not concentrating on hiring during the Christmas break, we felt that this year that that number is larger because we had the forced four-day shutdown. So, people that may have been at the school sites or work sites that would have been hiring otherwise, we're not hiring this year. So, there were some other, some other outside influences this year that we didn't have in the past, but that we will be better prepared for next year.
Okay. Well, and thank you for that. And the fill rate's very, very high. I was just surprised that if we're filling 99.6% of all our vacant positions by the beginning of the school year, that we're filling another 572 or 4 or 5% of our instructional workforce by the end of that first semester. You know, if it's retirements, well, I'd love to have that be something that we would look at in our collaborative bargaining because I don't know if there's a way to encourage instructors to retire at the end of a school year rather than the middle of a school year. I mean, frankly, when I saw that number, I thought it was people leaving teaching just because they were disenchanted or.
I'm thinking it has to do with their year, they get a year's credit in January. They get that final year's credit.
You get the whole year.
In January.
Yeah, well, that makes me.
For that year for retirement. So, they don't want to go the rest of the year.
Right. And then let me add, too, it's the day that they signed. It's the day, some people don't really realize that they're signing to, say they signed and then they end up getting out in April. A lot of people end up signing, even getting out, and didn't even know it got out earlier.
Well, I don't want to bog us down, but I'd love to be briefed on that, Ms. Palmer, at some later time, just because it just seems to me that's something that we might want to look at collaboratively bargaining to try to prevent retirements, you know, mid-year. It just seems like a lot of disruption and turnover. The other question I had is going through here and I get, and you don't have to address this, Ms. Kent, but I get the book that you prepare every year, Ms. Palmer, on our minority hiring rates at all levels. Is that part of our, I'm sorry, Carol, Ms. Kent, is that part of our strategic scorecard everywhere? Because actually, in going through this tonight, I didn't see that data in here and I've looked all through there. And if not, I'm wondering if we can take a look at making part of our strategic goals or scorecard, our minority hire rates. I mean, we don't have to decide that now, but I'd just like to throw it out there because frankly, I'll be very candid. I just went through the book. I know you gave it to us two months ago, but I do go through that every year and I just went through it recently. And I know everybody's doing the best they can, but I just am dismayed at the percentage of Hispanic educators that we have in our system compared to the percentage of Hispanic students we have. And I'm dismayed even more at the percentage of Hispanics that we have in our assistant principalship pool compared to the ratio of students. And I've been tracking that on the three years I've been on the board and it doesn't seem to be getting, and forgive me if I'm wrong about this, but it doesn't seem to be getting markedly better. And I'm just looking at the ratio where we have 34, 35% Hispanic students. And I think this is relatively accurate. I think only about 10, 11% of our assistant principal pool is Hispanic. And to contrast that with other minorities.
14. It's 14. We went on 1%.
14, okay. I'm sorry, I was off a little bit there.
Yeah, but I do watch that as well.
Doing it off memory. We do much better with African-Americans. I think about 26, 7% of our students are African-Americans, but about 25, 6% of our assistant principal pool is African-American, too. So, just would really, I think that's very important to that community.
But that took over 35 years to get to that percentage.
Also, with Hispanics, we know that if we increase the number of teachers that we have, the instructional piece of it, the likelihood of bringing people up through that, through the ranks and into administration is greater for us. So, increasing our number of instructional is going to be really important to us. That was one of the talks Carol and I had this year in regard to could we make some other trips unlike we have? And that's why they went down south. Right.
I would add, Mr. Chairman, I think our unitary status report does track that because the board is committed, while we're not set to specific targets, the board is committed and the administration is committed to increasing and monitoring our diversity. I think we purposely not placed it in the scorecard because that would require the setting of specific targets as though we are under some requirement to meet specific quotas or targets. And so, unitary status tracks it. We are very aware of it aggressively going after it, but we've avoided putting specific targets into the scorecard precisely for that reason.
And you know what, that never occurred to me and I should have picked up on that because actually that would probably give us some legal problems, some serious legal problems because we can't have quotas and I know that. But, you know, the other thing that strikes me when I look at that annual report is we are doing a really good job in certain learning communities and where we would expect to be doing a good job. But logically, I don't really understand that either. I mean, I know we may have a concentration of Hispanic population in one learning community and a little bit less so in another one, but I don't know why that would mean a relative scarcity of Hispanic hires in other learning communities. That just never has really added up to me, you know, why. So, anyway, just something that you want to look at. Mr. Roach.
Superintendent Jenkins, you mentioned something about the talent pool is better to get teachers in March, April, May. Now, being that when I worked for OCPS, I was hired two weeks before school starts, where would that put me?
Now, Mr. Roach, I did not imply that there were no quality candidates left late in the summer.
I think I'm at the bottom of the barrel, but I didn't know it until four decades later.
Actually, your greatest volume, let me state that differently. Your greatest, largest volume of the highest quality candidates are consumed early in the hiring process.
But you could find a diamond in the rough leg.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Man, I was going to walk out a depressed man here for just a second, but I want, yes, Mr. Sbled, two questions I have, Dr. Palmer. One, around the country for the last year or so, I've heard about a pretty depressing percentage and I want to know if that's, if that's hitting us here. And that is that 50% of the teachers in America are leaving the profession after five years. Are we seeing that, feeling that? What's your perspective on that?
I put out a stay survey, which I gave results to in your last board update, to those who were in their fifth year. I think a couple of board members got it, too, you were in your fifth year. They all seemed pretty happy. The one thing, the non-negotiables for them were the benefits and the salary. Those were the two things that came out very clear, that they did not want to lose any more of their benefits and they did not want to lose any more of their salary. But overall, they seemed pretty dedicated to the children of OCPS.
Yeah, I saw the report. I just wonder if that percentage was accurate as far as we're concerned. It sounds like it's not. Second question I would have is, we mentioned a little bit about the, trying to find high-quality teachers, highly qualified teachers in the ESE areas. And, but what I'm really curious about here and maybe, I think this is related to the presentation, would be today it seems like most regular teachers are dealing with ESE kids in a regular fashion. In other words, the inclusion, I think, has finally arrived, at least a lot further than it was five, 10 years ago. So, I'm wondering how, how do we feel about, or is there any other need for our regular education teachers to receive more training on handling ESE services? For example, one teacher I know has a Down Syndrome child and an autism child in her classroom and hasn't really received any special training for that, you know? So, I'm just wondering how we're, how we're dealing with that, not only with substitutes who may be long-term, but also regular teachers. Would you have an answer for that or is this off, the wrong presentation for that? Go ahead.
Mr. Roach, let me comment briefly. Two things come to mind. Number one, in teacher preparation programs, there is some exposure to ESE or special education. It's not enough. Because we have more and more inclusion, there are also ESE specialists or teachers that consult with regular classroom teachers on campus normally that give them some additional expertise and assistance. I still think that's probably not enough because more and more inclusionary models and more and more students included in the regular classroom mean that our teachers need additional training and preparation. So, you heard me talk a couple of times about really ramping up our PD offerings, especially over the summer, hopefully being able to compensate. Dr. Diaz's department put together modules, ESE modules for administrators, and we're going to replicate some of those modules so that our regular classroom teachers will be able to take them as well and hopefully have some compensation for completing those modules. Very similar to what we went through with ELL populations where the masses had to make sure they had basic understanding of how you teach English language learners. We want to replicate that for ESE populations as well because you're absolutely correct. We have more and more students mainstreamed. We want them mainstreamed and more and more classroom teachers need additional information to be able to deal with them. But I don't want you to think anyone just is giving a child with no assistance because there are resources on campus and ESE teachers on campus that should be consulting with those teachers as well.
I can say, too, that our local colleges, for instance, UCF, offers an ESE course even to regular ed graduates so that they are familiar with dealing with ESE students even if it's not their major.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Roach. Were you through? I'm sorry. Okay. I thought there was another question coming there or you're pondering. All right. Well, thank you again. One last question, quick one. I had always thought, because folks, I've had the same experience as other board members have had. I've had many, many calls over the years asking to apply for a position. I thought the positions didn't open until May. I thought the postings, so the comment earlier about we encourage our principals to do their hiring in the spring, because I've had applicants where I've been told by HR and other board members have too, where I was sort of questioning some up here, that the positions open in May and they won't hear anything until May. How does that work?
Well, that's open hiring. You mean for a new position? For a new candidate? Yes, it's at the end of, end of May. But we do, we have to wait for the budgets to come back. But we have hiring all year long because we have vacancies consistently. But what we do with the, like the contracts that you saw, the 30 contracts that we've awarded so far, we try to get the best and the brightest as quickly as possible when we go out for recruitment trips. So, we're only looking at those who are newly graduating and I'm trying to get and capture them as quickly as possible because we know that we'll have at least 30 vacancies in those STEM areas in ESE because we always do.
So, is that just in select areas then? It's not just for all new College of Education graduates?
Right. We only, and we're only taking the best of the best and then we're looking for, and targeting specific ethnicities and specific content areas.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Superintendent Jenkins, thank you very much, Ms. Palmer, Ms. Kent. Board members, I, I just want to say I love this format and I want to thank everybody for their interest. I just love going through the scorecard data. I think it's very helpful. So, thank you, Superintendent. All right. We're now into our consent agenda. Let me make a couple of announcements. Any individual who would like to address an item on the consent or non-consent agenda may do so by completing an appropriate yellow form such as this at the board table by Ms. McGill at the far left-hand side of the dais. I will call you to speak when that item you've signed up to is before the board. We'll have three minutes to address the board. Try to keep it professional, please. We don't have any newly appointed administrators to recognize tonight. So, Dr. Jenkins, do we have any changes to the agenda tonight?
Mr. Chairman, we have two. Item 4.01, withdrawal of the instruction employee initials QM from Memorial Middle School. Secondly, we are moving consent, item 14.02, request approval of school mitigation agreement for capacity enhancement to non-consent, item 16.01. That is for Ivy's subdivision.
Okay. I find cause to amend the agenda as requested. Can I entertain a motion to do so? Moved by Mrs. Robinson, suggested by Ms. Gold. Is there any debate on that? Seeing none. All those in favor of amending the agenda, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Show the agenda amended. We don't have anything under item three, public hearing, so we are now on the consent agenda. I do have one speaker on the consent agenda. Item 14.1, I believe, Ms. Moore?
14.
Yes, 14 point, it says 14.01. Was that, that's, was that the right? I'll wait till you get up to the podium. I know it is. 14 point, it says 14.01. Was that, was that the right? I'll wait till you get up to the podium. I know it is.
Mr. Chair, just to clarify, I think she was trying to find an issue on there with regards to 14, but 14 is not an agenda item. 14 is just the general header.
Okay, 14, just tell me the top. I was waiting till you got up here, Ms. Moore. Just tell me the topic you want to speak on. I'll tell you the agenda item it is.
14, legal audit issues.
That's just a heading.
Request approval of proposed employment agreement with general counsel.
Okay, so that's 14.05.
Okay, it doesn't have them.
Okay. All right. Well, you've been before as many times. You know the process. Three minutes, please start by stating your name and address and welcome.
Thank you. Diana Moore, 1020 Webster Avenue, President of Orange County Classroom Teachers Association. Little history, certification for our union took place in 1975.
Ms. Moore, Ms. Moore, I'm sorry. This is on the approval of legal counsel's contract. Are your comments addressed to the approval of the contract?
It will connect to the legal contract because it has to do with legal issues.
I'm sorry, but that's too tenuous. That's not to remain under Robert's rules of order. It's got to be germane if it's about the approval of the general counsel's new contract.
If it has to do with unfair labor practices that are done by the legal counsel, that's not how you're connected.
I'm sorry. That's a good college effort, but not close. But I'll be happy to sit down with you and you had sent me a request recently, say I'll have lunch and we'll do that in the next week and we can talk through some of these issues and others. But I would be bending the rules on germanity way beyond even remotely being relevant if I were to allow you to go into the certification issue on this agenda item.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Ms. Moore. Okay. I don't have any other speakers on the consent agenda. Board members, are there any questions on the consent agenda?
No, I'm moving the approval.
It's been moved by Mrs. Gordon. Is there a second? Seconded by Mrs. Robinson. Is there any debate or discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show that adopted. We are now on new item 16.01, which is a former item 14.02, which is a CEA on Ivy's Mr. Roach, was it on that issue? I don't think I cleared you. I'm going to go.
I'm sorry.
Never mind. I answered my own question. I don't think I cleared you. Ms. Cato.
I wanted to make a comment on the consent agenda and I wanted to do a kudos because the Cheney Health Clinic that is going to service the Cheney Elementary School children and it's going to be one of the first ones that is even going to have dental services. It is an area of the community that does not have health services and Nemours has been a partner in funding and getting this clinic up and going. And I want to thank Eileen Fernandez and Woody Rodriguez for their hard work in getting this agreement done. You know, it was pulled two times before this. Also wrapped around this is the Evans Health Services Clinic. And it is so crucial. I mean, this morning we were at the PSP and it talked about the fact, showed the young lady who has asthma issues. And in the old days, she would be sent home every day and with the fact that there's a health professional there, she can go back to class and the mom knows that she's being taken care of. So, I know it's been hard. I know that it's been back and forth, but I also know that this is the right thing for the young people in our community and I just wanted to say a thank you to you two for your hard work.
Ms. Robinson.
I too wanted to jump on the bandwagon with the item right above the Cheney Elementary one, the Evans High School Wellness Cottage. Thank you so much, Eileen and, excuse me, Ms. Fernandez and Mr. Rodriguez for your hard work to negotiate this and get it. It's going to be a wonderful thing for the Evans community and the students and the teachers and it's just fabulous that we can do this partnership with Children's Home Society. So, thank you for your hard work to make it happen.
Amen again. Two great programs. Thank you. All right. We are now on item 16.01. Mr. Rodriguez, do you want to briefly explain this one? It's a CEA.
Actually, I think I'll either have Ms. Fernandez or is there someone from Government Relations that wants to? Let me just have Ms. Fernandez since she's at the mic to speak on this particular issue.
Salva, welcome.
Good evening. I'm Julie Salva with Planning and Governmental Relations. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the CEA. This is a new residential subdivision being proposed in the Windy Ridge Elementary School, Chain of Lakes Middle and Dr. Phillips High School zone. They're proposing to build 42 units. The middle school and high school are overcapacity. There's no plans for a relief school in our current 10-year plan, so we are asking them to pay mitigation to help provide capacity for their project.
All right, Ms. Gould.
This is in my district and I am not opposed in any way of holding up this small development, but one of the things that we discussed this afternoon and I've been talking to pupil assignment about is looking at where the student populations are coming from and should we be revisiting that because Chain of Lakes in particular, there are educational challenges beyond because of the bus ride for some of those kids being so long and trying to get them tutoring and it goes so late in the day. So, there's lots of layers to this issue and Chain of Lakes is struggling, so we do need to probably look at that mighty close and try to come up with a way to make sure we keep these kids engaged and successful. And so, you know, I think there may be some solutions out there if we explore it, I hope. But the impact is so minute with this little subdivision that there's no reason to hold it up for those reasons, even though we are overcapacity in those schools. We need to be creative.
All right. Seeing none, I don't have anybody else punched up to speak on this issue, so everybody know what you're voting on. You're voting on what was 14.02, the CEA agreement, capacity enhancement agreement for Ivy's subdivision. Everybody understand? Can I have a motion to approve or disapprove that?
So moved.
It's been moved by Ms. Gould to approve it, seconded by Mrs. Gordon. Is there any debate on that? Seeing none. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Nay. Show that adopted. Okay. We are on information items. Anything needs to be said on those? Okay. Report by attorneys. Mr. Rodriguez.
No reports at this time. I do want to thank the board for their patience on those two items and I too will join on the bandwagon and thank Ms. Fernandez for her diligence on that particular set of agreements. But no report at this time.
Mr. Rodriguez, we don't say much when contracts are approved, but I just want to thank you. I've been on this board three years now. It's hard to believe it's been three years. I think you've been on the board three and a half years. I don't think I could have done it without you. You know, frankly, your level of compensation is well below what you would make out in the private sector and I appreciate immensely the services that you give this board. You've gone three years without a raise. Thank you for that, for being fiscally conservative. You always give us good counsel and I'm trying to figure out how to say this, but you fill the role in every sense that I think a government attorney should fill on a board like this. You give us legal advice. You don't try to steer us one way or another. You give us objective perspective and I don't think I can think of a single time in three years where I've taken issue with your legal advice and coming from a fellow lawyer, there were, tend to be harsher critics than others. So, thank you very, very much for all your service. Ms. Cato.
Well, and Mr. Rodriguez, you know, I hate to sit up here and sound like a parrot, but I am going to sound like a parrot because I had the opportunity to chair this board when we were doing the interviews. And Mrs. Gordon had come back from I don't know how many NSBA conferences and kept saying we need our own legal department. Am I saying that wrong?
You got it right.
And you know, we knew, we knew we needed expertise. We knew we needed it in-house. We just weren't quite sure how we were going to get there. And through your steady guidance and looking at the chunks. So, you know, as a school board member, I know when I have an issue with real estate or land development, I'm going to go talk to Eileen. And I know when somebody calls me with an ESE question, I'm going to go to Sarah. And when I've got an employee termination problem or I've got a charter school problem, I'm going to John. You guys are right down the hall. It makes it so much easier and I have been following your budget diligently because there was a part of me that knew if we brought it in-house, we were probably going to save money. And even with increasing our legal staff and getting the paralegals that you need to be successful, we still are saving money. You also, speaking as the president of Florida School Boards Association, you are well-respected by the other school board attorneys. They always comment on the willingness of Orange County Public Schools and our attorneys to step up and deal with the hard issues, to go to Tampa, make the presentations, to do the homework. And for that, I am so very grateful because as we talk about being the leader, not only in the nation, but in the state, the fact that we are willing to share our expertise, you know, more than once I have told, because being the president of the Florida School Boards Association is a huge honor and it's been a lot of work, but it's also very hard for a smaller rural district to think they have anything in common with me because they have way less students than I have. Their budget is so much smaller than our budget. And I have worked diligently to say, I'm very lucky because I'm so big that we have to have all the bells and whistles to survive. So, if we have something we've done and it's working, we're willing to share it. And what I'm hearing from the attorneys is that you're there, you're willing to help, that you're involved in all of the blog or all of the bulletin board or whatever and you're not afraid to ask for help. And you know, that was one of the criticisms that we got was this guy doesn't know anything about education. And we're like, huh, he can learn education law. We need someone who knows government law. And so, you have stepped into some big shoes and you have filled them more than adequately. You have filled them superbly and I am very proud of the hire that we did and I'm glad you're going to be here for some more years.
Amen. Before I go to Mrs. Gordon, only because they're friends of mine, Heather and Jennifer, y'all know your contract was awarded, so we appreciate your commitment. But if you're just enjoying the theater, well, welcome. Usually people, when they get their contracts, they're out of here.
Like when everybody else left, you guys could have left.
Okay. I didn't mean to embarrass you. Okay. Mrs. Gordon.
I love that. I love that. Well, you know what? Just to even hear the chairman, Bill Sibley, I think we all pretty much start, it's hard to depart with one, you know, legal aspect of the school board when it's been like a 30-plus years tradition. But it was a hard nose for Joey taking over that chairmanship. Rick wanted to do it also, but we just couldn't bend our ear because people were leading him, saying things to him in another way. But that has always been my dream. And as Joey stated, I've watched the big dogs and Mr. Block would always tell me, you know, I said, I don't always run with the big dogs. But this was one time we were really running with the big dogs. We were told how to run with the big counties. And I kind of got a little upset in the very beginning with the coalition and I told Rick, I always give him credit for that coalition because that was his baby. But it was so, you know, all of the smaller districts and they did not have the same concerns as us. Another chairman, Susan Arkin, would always tell me, watch the big dogs because if you are a big dog, you have to run with the big dog because the little dogs will step over you if they all get together because they have their, they have their little areas that they're all looking out for. So, that's really been a big trend, but that's one of my major goals and accomplishment. We were all called in by the former superintendent and even this one and asked what legacy we would like to leave or what goal. And I told you all several, I had several. And one of the biggest was to get a legal department because as I looked throughout the states that were improving, the states that were moving ahead. And another thing you may even want to look at, there was, they even have attorneys for the superintendent. The superintendent had their own attorney because really Woody is not, Dr. Jenkins superintendent, I mean, legal counsel. Woody belongs to this board. You know what I'm talking about, Bill. And there are so many districts, when you go up to the National School Board, they be back and forth with each other because the superintendent is protected by their, her or his legal attorney. But I do want to say, one of the things that I'm really proud about is that Joey took that initiative and we put it together. Sometime Joey had to get out of the hot seat and allow the council, Orange County lawyers to come in and help. And Woody, we didn't always start off on the right road because we knew education and you knew government law, as Joey said, but we gave you a chance. We gave you a hard time also and we were very, very critical of you, but you have really stood the gamut and you've proven why you have hired because when you're dealing with one, one general counsel and a half-outhouse general counsel, which was one of the best outhouse we had with Drew, we thought Drew was just excellent. And Frank and I got along extremely well also, but I thought it just wasn't enough. All you need is for a person to move on or pass away. And when you do that, then where's the district? One thing that I like is that the area superintendents can get to a general counsel and they do not have to wait for that general counsel to get to them. And I think that is it. Now, the only thing that this board did not do, since they did not name it like I asked, I am putting a motion on the floor that this legal department be named Gordon Rodriguez. I'm only kidding. I'm only kidding. You can do that when I pass away. Okay?
Well, I understand you're his biggest client, so I...
But I really want to say to you, Mr. Chairman, for you to give, you're a lawyer and you know, you know the law. You have kids in school and all I tell everybody, you just have to be a parent. You do have to be a parent to feel the crunches of what being on a school board is all about. It's nice if you could make it on this board without kids going through the public quote-unquote, not charter, public school system. It's a big difference. When you put your kid through the public school system, you're qualified to serve on this school board. So, I want to commend you, being a lawyer and seeing it one way and then agreeing with our general counsel because it didn't start out that way. So, y'all got a wonderful, y'all could go give each other a little hug.
Woody will echo this. It sounds great. Just don't ever mention your kids from up here and God forbid, don't ever mention their school because you'll never hear the end of it.
But I want to commend you.
Took me about six months to learn that lesson.
Right. And I want to commend the board for supporting the legal department and I think we have one of, I feel good. We have one of the best legal department in the United States because I know what the others look like. And not only that, several of the councils are graduates of Orange County Public School. So, Ricky, give that a hand.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Well, board members, I want to thank you first of all. I'm very blessed to be in this position and it's not always that as a lawyer, you get to practice in an area where, as I've always described it, when you're in government law, you have the opportunity to spend the quality time you need to get the answer right and not necessarily to bill the hour or be able to cheat your clients or anything else that people think about lawyers in an unscrupulous way. But in this setting, we do have lawyers that are dedicated. I do appreciate the fact that we have a very collaborative relationship both between the board and the superintendent and our office and I think that also makes the job that much more appreciated. And in other counties, even throughout the state and maybe not so far away, where you've got boards that are very contentious and they're not working closely with the superintendent, you do have that need for division. you do have that need for division. But with every good success story, you know that there's got to be people there to support. And obviously, I've also been blessed with a good legal team, folks, that when I started, had only been a couple of months ahead of me in terms of their timeframe, but have also grown in the position, Eileen and John, and Sarah, who we made as an excellent hire, as well as Barbara, all of this team combined with Carrie Anne and some of the other folks in our office, you've got a chance to meet them recently. They helped fulfill the office into an Office of Legal Services, which is what the office was renamed about a year or so, from the Office of the General Counsel. So I look forward to the next three years. I appreciate the opportunity to be here, and will look to continue to improve on my evaluation, even from Ms. Gordon.
She gave you good marks. All right, let's go into committee.
That all depends on what I make on my zonoh.
All right, Legislative Committee, Ms. Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of weeks ago, the Florida School Board Association held their legislation, legislature in the day, no, day in the legislature. And several of us went up there, we heard a seminar on the latest bills that are being proposed and working their way through the legislature. And several of us went around and tried to talk to legislators, or their aides, in regard to bills that we either supported or primarily opposed, in accordance with our platform items that were approved. The one that really stood out for us was the trigger bill that looks to be approved. Ms. Moore and I went up, made an emergency trip up to Tallahassee and testified last week, last Monday, testified in front of the Senate Education Committee, and said that we were opposed to the bill. And then your editorial came out regarding it, and, Mr. Chair, I want to commend you on a wonderful article. We passed it out around the coalition, and I think it really was spot-on with what the issue is, so I want to thank you for that. There are some other bills, though, that deal with legislation, that I think we all need to be aware of. There, of course, in addition to the parent trigger, there's the bill pertaining to SES tutoring money, that would give us more flexibility on how we spend those funds, and we certainly hope that that goes through. But then there's some other sort of alarming ones, which would give payment only on students who pass the EOC, so that's alarming. And funding for dual enrollment is threatened to, either, I think it was decreased, or it would only be paid a percentage. And so, and those are certainly values to our, the dual enrollment's a value to many of our students. So we've got many that will be detrimental, I think, to public education, and certainly to our funding and to our students. The other one, too, that's going through right now, is where there's a proposal to increase the, I guess, cut scores of SAT scores and ACTs to compete for the Bright Futures scholarships. And that's going to really hurt a lot of students, primarily minority and low-income, that is being targeted, and that's really a shame. So, you know, for many students, that's a real plus in going to college, and it's looking like they're wanting to, you know, hurt the chances of a lot of kids. So, you know, just as in the past years, really some tough things that are going on up there, but I think our board really did a great job in stepping up and, you know, fighting for what we believe.
We were well represented up there.
I think we were, I really do think we were. So I wanted to thank everybody, and if anybody has any questions or want to add, Mrs. Cadel was there, Ms. Gould was there, Ms. Robinson, Ms. Moore, me, Mr. Roach. Kat, you weren't able to go, because you were, yeah, you were on the phone, you were on the phone. So if anybody else who was up there want to say something, that ends my report.
I just want to add to that, since I'm your Board of Directors for FSBI, I'm your representative, we also had our Board of Directors meeting, and I put those minutes of the meeting on our board docs. And just want to say, since Ms. Cadel is our reigning president of FSBA, yes, through to June, right, until June, it was a wonderful meeting and program, the entire three or four days we were all there working, that was really wonderful. And I want to make sure everybody understands, too, that the FSBA conference in June, our email already came out about that, make sure you jump on there, so you don't miss out having a reservation at the hotel that's right there where it all is. So anyway, thank you, Ms. Cadel. Thank you, Ms. Flynn, for organizing that for us, because it was a lot of fun, even though it was crazy, it was a lot of fun.
Superintendent Jenkins, I'm sorry, I didn't see your bun there.
That's okay, I gave my report actually during the work session, but I would be remiss if I didn't make two comments. One, we are certainly pleased at the working relationship this administration has with our Legal Services Department, our general counsel. Certainly feel no need, all of our legal requirements and services are met through that department, very pleased at the collaboration. So I want to add my commendation and congratulations to our general counsel for his contract extension. Secondly, I would really be remiss if I did not mention an historic event that took place this morning. As the chairman's dream of a philanthropic strategic plan was actually kicked off in the community, we were quite proud and quite pleased, and want to congratulate our chairman on the culmination of his initial dream. That is where it started. And for all of the staff and members of the board, as well as the foundation that worked on it, we have to give kudos to our chairman, because it really was his brainchild.
Thank you for that. And, you know, I will say this, one of the members of the media asked me, do we have any major announcements to make this morning? And we didn't there, because we haven't been given permission to. And I can't even say at this board table, but board members, you will learn when our funders give us permission. We actually have two major initiatives, of folks who haven't given us permission yet to announce them, that we're very, very excited about. So it's already starting to have an effect. And if you haven't met Debbie Pedraza yet, our new Director of Development, she is absolutely incredible. And I just want to give kudos to Ms. Palmer and her department, and you Superintendent Jenkins for that hire, because I think she's going to be a key to that. And the foundation did a lot of hard work, and Ms. Flynn, and Ms. Moore, and Ms. Gordon, and Mr. Roach, who served on the committee, so thank you very, very much. Ms. Cadel.
I guess it's a report, and then I have a policy issue, so however you want it to go. Four of us on the board had an opportunity to attend the Common Core Boot Camp. I think, Mr. Roach, you went down to Stewart, to Martin County, and then Mrs. Flynn, Mrs. Robinson, and I went to Ocala. First off, Dr. Jarrah and Dr. Jenkins, Kevin Baird was awesome. He spoke in a language we all understood, and he spoke so highly of what Orange County Public Schools is doing. And Mrs. Robinson and Mrs. Flynn, you can correct me if I don't get this exactly right, but we got kudos for hiring Dr. Jenkins. And Kevin Baird said, he asked superintendents what they were doing for Common Core, and Barbara was the only one who had an answer for him. Is that not what he said, or was I dreaming that? And so, you know, he basically said, you've hired the best superintendent in the nation. And so, yeah, don't let your head get too big. But it was a really good, it was a really good opportunity. I have spoken to the board development group to see if perhaps, and I don't know if this will happen or not, but because the information was so good and so timely, that perhaps in June, Kevin Baird would come again, and instead, you know, you would miss, you would miss the concurrent sessions, but for an extra charge of, you know, $35, $40, $45, or whatever, you would commit to the four hours of training on Common Core. So we're kind of working on that, but there are going to be some webinars. And I know one of the webinars is going to be on talking to your community about Common Core, and I'm not quite sure what the other two are. But stay tuned, because it was, without a doubt, one of the best trainings I had ever been to. The initial evaluations that are coming back are phenomenal. Everyone was just very, very pleased with the time. And, you know, one of the things that, being president this year, is we've looked long and hard at what the members are saying, and the members are feeling the crunch of being away at night, the cost. And so this is our first attempt to do in drive-ins, where it's a four-hour training, it starts at 10, it ends at 2. So you can leave early, do the training, and go home, and the registration fee is lower. So we are trying to become more virtual, we're trying to become more consumer-friendly for the school board members. But the most exciting thing was when Commissioner Bennett came and spoke to us on Thursday morning. We have always had a problem with our training budget, because it comes from the Department of Education. And it's kind of been a political football, in some years we get it, some years we don't get it. And when Commissioner Bennett saw that we were training school board members in Common Core, he took Dr. Blant and aside and said, you'll get your training grant. This is the stuff that school board members need to know. So my conversations with Dr. Bennett have been encouraging. Reform is here, whether you agree with it, disagree with it, you know, the ship has sailed on that. But he's willing to listen, and if you'll remember, I told you all that he wanted to meet with us four to five times. When we were up there, we sent him three dates, and he chose the first date to meet with us. So I'm out of here on the 21st of April, we have an hour with him on the 22nd of April, from 12 to 1:00. And I'll be coming back that afternoon, because I have a big event at Winter Park High School the next morning. But, so I'll be having that conversation with him. So I think he was sincere when he said he wanted to talk to us. So I'm very encouraged. And then when you're ready, I'll go to my policy thing.
We're ready.
Well, I think we all were very fortunate to get the news article today about one of our charter schools, and they are now becoming a magnet program. And I'm not quite sure when we approved that charter, that we told them that they could become a magnet program. So I just kind of wondered what the superintendent and the Office of School Choice was thinking about our charter school, who now is going to have a sports something magnet that UCF is writing the curriculum for. Was that a good lead-in, Dr. Bernier?
You look like a football player about to go into the game, Dr. Bernier.
I can certainly share with you, after reading the article myself, and being reported to me, I have been in touch with the governing board of that particular school. I'm also in touch with our wonderful legal counsel, that has received such fabulous accolades tonight. We've responded to the charter, asking them specifically to determine how they went about these changes, when specifically in Section 1A of their contract with us as your sponsor, with you as their sponsor. They are required to make all large curriculum changes by bringing them forward before the board. We've received a response from the school. I've read it once, just prior to coming down for pre-agenda, I've read it several times during the meeting. I feel like I have a great understanding of it, and tomorrow afternoon, John Paul Marine and I have the luxury of being in mediation with each other regarding another charter school issue. So we'll have ample time, and we will stay on it and keep you apprised of any updates and changes.
I'm wondering if we need to do damage control, in that, in case anybody else thinks they're going to be a magnet program? I think we need to, perhaps, as we're doing our evaluations or whatever, remind them, I think you said it was 1A, that if they're changing their focus, they have to let us know?
Yes, ma'am.
You know, I think it might behoove us just to remind all of our charter schools that they told us what they were going to do, and we expect them to do what they said they were going to do.
Yes, ma'am.
And, Mr. Chairman?
Well, and, you know, again, it's not to put it in legal speak, and I really don't even know how I feel about the issue, but just as, from my perspective, every time I talk to a crowd of folks, you know, out in the public, I always say, charter is just a word for a contract. It's a contract, and you can't have an amendment to a major provision of the contract without both parties agreeing. I think sometimes with all the discussion about charter schools, that's lost. It's why frankly, I have such an issue with the proposed model contract, because we might as well not even have a contract if we can negotiate terms. So, you know, this board, I think, has a track record of supporting charters, and we've approved quite a few, even in the three years I've been here. But they do come to us with a specific curriculum and a specific plan, and I don't think you can have a major change in the contract like that without the approval of the other party. But we'll, I'm sure we'll work through it legal.
Well, and I don't know that I want to call it Scope Creek, Scope Creep. I'm not sure what I want to call it, but I very distinctly remember the conversation. And we were modeling this school after a leadership program that dealt with troubled youth, and had a great success rate with children that were involved in drugs, or substance abuse, or behavior problems. And it's very interesting, because someone who lives in my neighborhood came down, and she spoke to me, and she was talking to me about thinking about putting her child in that school. And my advice to her was, go look at who they're attracting, see what their test scores are, you know, look and see, because my mind was, we were going after a troubled population that perhaps would drop out, and we were going to get them back on the right path. This young lady, who the mom was thinking of sending to the school, that wasn't the situation at all. The situation was, mom was afraid the child was going to get lost in middle school, was looking for a high academic program that was smaller, which sounded to me more like another charter school than the one she was looking at. So I'm not so sure that what was presented to us in the beginning, and where they have gone to in the, has it been, has it been open three years or two?
This is their third year of operation.
I'm not so sure that it hasn't changed from what they told us they were doing to who they're actually serving right now. And so this might be the time to have that conversation, too. And, I mean, if it's a model that works, I don't have a problem with it, but in my mind, and I've seen Mrs. Robinson going, yeah, that's what I remember, too, what we were told the purpose of the school was, and what it sounds like it's doing now, are not the same egg. And that's all I'm going to say.
I'm sure we'll be hearing back from you on this one, Dr. Bernier, thank you.
I have a comment.
Good evening.
I have a question for Dr. Bernier.
Oh, Mrs. Gordon, yes, Dr. Bernier, Mrs. Gordon.
Bernie, okay. My concern is, I do have a concern, because right now, the board is in process of looking at all of our magnets. We had a major workshop on it. We wanted to look at duplications of services, we wanted to see if we want to expand our services. Then, if we do, then we need to see if we are going to grant charter schools those type of services and location. Now, I have a problem with it, because we do have a sports magnet, and it is underpopulated right now. And magnets, you can go anywhere, okay? So my major concern is that, before we agree with anything, because, you know, because someone is assisting them, if we let it get out of hand like that, then anybody will come in and grant. Any major organization, a management company, will find a prominent business to fund the program, and then, it's just another way of escaping and looking out for the person that is within that organization that is controlling it. And that kind of troubled me and bothered me. So we are still in the process of looking at our magnets, and you did a major workshop, and we're waiting on a report back, if I'm not mistaken, from our superintendent and staff as it relates to that. So I would like, Dr. Bernier, and his staff, to keep that in mind. And especially if it's duplication, because we have a sports magnet, if that's, I didn't understand exactly what kind of magnet, but I didn't know if it was similar to the one that we have even at Jones High School. So I have a major concern with that, too, okay? And I do have a report that I told you that I would like to highlight, and I said I wasn't, but it is a very important... But, it is a very important report.
Okay. Dr. Bernier, thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Thank you, Boardman.
Mrs. Gordon, why don't we go to your report now, if that meets your...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you, in the section where Nancy's report is, Rick, what is it, 1901? Is it 1901? I would like for you to open that up on your board doc, because there are some things that I really want you to see. And I know you've been real busy on 19, I think it's 1901. But, one part that I'd like for you to go to is the key work plan outline. And I've asked them for a lot of information to give to us, because we're looking at poverty in Orange County public schools as it relates to the county of Orange. And I did want you to note that 63 clients have completed vocational training. Now, they don't make their reports like that anymore, because we've gone into a total new format. But, I do want you to know that we are not paying for this. This is the, this is the county commissioners that is providing the vocational training for us, but we're providing the staff, which I just think that this is awesome. Now, the annual goal has been increased from 110 to complete vocational training to 200. That's 200 people that's getting vocational training through the Community Action Board that we, as the school board, do not have to pay for. And they are adding in additional funding. So, anything that our vocational department can offer to them, I'm considering that. Also, there's a customized vocational class in partnership with the Orange County Public School. And this began with an orientation, it just started in March. The 19th of March, a class is going to cover Certified Nursing Assistant, high class, and Home Health Aid in the curriculum, making graduating students qualified for either positions, both of which are in demand in the local labor market. So, I really wanted to highlight that part for you. And then, if you go down the report, you will see a beautiful report that Mel has put together, an attachment. This is the new way that the Community Action Board is now reporting. All of the information, you can look in line items and see exactly how much money, if you look at 1.2B, Completed ABEGED, and Received Certification of Diploma, all of that. This is pertaining to us. I think this is one of our best educational partners that we really have in helping us. They have a work plan, the outcome, I'm not going to go into that. But then, I really ask that you take a look at these two maps, that they talked about, the Orange County Community Center's Low Income Families by the Census Track. And for 2001, the low-income families, it kind of blows your mind when you look at it. Look at where your district is. Look at where you are. Look at Pam, where you are, okay? It blows your mind. My district is not the lowest anymore, it looks like. So, I mean, what I'm saying is, the growth here, and it has it under Amkrati and under Theresa Jacobs. So, I really want us to work closely with the Community Action Board and formulating this. And I look forward to Commissioner Boyd out of Pam Gould's district coming forward and justifying it. I don't think it's going to need any justification, because this is a census report. So, Mr. Chairman, this is my report as it relates to the Community Action Board. And in the very beginning, they have a major survey that they are going to be doing with the community. So, what I'm trying to say is, they're feeding, clothing, educating our children, and helping our families to create jobs. And this is a very important committee. And it is a time committee, you know, where you serve your time. And then, Rick has served on that committee. I think he's the only person on this board that have served on this committee. We usually take turn, like we do with the Florida School Board Association, being the director. So, when my time comes off, I'm telling you, this is rake it breaking. Head Start is involved with this, and I've been speaking with Dr. Jenkins in reference to Head Start, and what we can do at school boards to help. You know, because they always need buildings and places, and there are children, there are incoming children. So, Mr. Chairman, thank you. And board members, thank you for taking the time. But, please, take a look at that report. I would get with your commissioner, and just see what we can forge together to help this improve. All righty, thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out, Mrs. Gordon. All right, I've been asked if there is a coalition report.
I'm going to give it.
Do you want to give it, Mrs. Robinson?
Yeah. We had a Central Florida Public School Board's Coalition meeting yesterday, and several of us were there in attendance. And I wanted to give a brief, just a brief, report. Jacob Stewart came to us. He's the executive director for the Central Florida Partnership. The Coalition, two people from the Coalition serve on the Congress of Regional Leaders, that's part of that partnership. And I happen to be one of those representatives. And so, I just want to tell you, he came to us to ask for our help and support with an initiative that they're putting together in June. And they want to put together an educational summit where they start to educate the business community on Common Core. And so, it was really, he was, I spoke with him afterwards, and he was very excited to hear that we had all started Common Core bootcamps and started learning about it ourselves. Of course, our staff and our teachers and administration, they've been on Common Core for years. I mean, this is something that's been in front of us. It's new to the business community. He and his group are in favor of Common Core, just as we are. We're all wanting to work together and make it a positive situation. So, I just want to report to you all that it is good. It's a, it is something that's out there that we actually agree with the business community on. And I'm excited that he felt comfortable coming and asking us to help him with this summit, and help him educate the business community on where we're headed with Common Core. So, I just want to pass that on to you all. And of course, the date, when they have the date and the time and everything's set, and they know exactly who's coming from the panel, and so on and so forth, that information will be given to you, because everyone's invited. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, board members, any other committee reports I may have missed? All right, any policy-level issues you'd like to agenda for future meetings?
Just one thing I want to say.
Yes, Mr. Roach.
You know, there's been so many accolades said tonight. I was going to hold off for two weeks, because I'm getting old. But, I wanted to tell the superintendent that the reason I haven't called you for two or three weeks is because your staff handles everything for you. I really, I can't tell you. I mean, all of us represent, besides for Bill, who has a whole dang thing. But, you know, tens of thousands of people in our district that we represent. But, I can't do a thing if I don't get support from your staff. And I look around, everybody behind me, Woody, your staff, everybody has gotten back with me like greased lightning. And because of that, it just clears my desk. And I continue to, and you can't know how much that's appreciated. You really can't, you know? And that includes Scott Howard, who, Scott's probably in Tallahassee somewhere. But, I mean, I just, I'm getting responses back much quicker than I ever had before. And I've never really complained about it, but it's extraordinary. So, I think you should know that. I'm not avoiding you, I'm just, it's getting done before I get to you. So, I can let you do your work, and that means a lot to my people, not just me, but the people who lean on me to get things done. And I can't, because I don't work for the school district, but your staff's really jumping on. So, that's it. So, I wanted to tell you that, because I always heard that if you reinforce good behavior, the likelihood of repeating is very high. And of course, if you do that with your own children, they'll screw up. So, I don't do it with my kids.
Do we have any Big Bang Theory fans here? Anybody watch that show? Big Bang Theory? No, never mind. I have a great joke, but you'd have to watch the show to get it. All right, work session schedule.
Wait a minute, my light's on.
I'm sorry. And Ms. Gould, I'm sorry, was this an earlier light?
It was, but I'll just do it all at the end.
All right, I apologize.
Well, go ahead, Ms. Gould.
Didn't see it. Ms. Cadel?
My parrot syndrome, I know, it must be the cough medicine I'm taking, Bud. Daryl and I had a situation in a school that she used to represent, that I now represent, that our staff has been working really, really hard on. And we got an email from the president of the Homeowners Association. And she had also emailed the county commissioner. And so, as the day goes on, Daryl does what she does, she sends it to me, because it's now my school. I do what I need to do, I send it to John Morris, and I, and he gets Harold Jenkins involved in it. And I send it to Scott, because it's a key, it's government relations thing. So, we get all the wheels turning. I just want you to know that I hope I'm here long enough that people realize that we do do things. Because the president of the Homeowners Association wrote back the commissioner and thanked her for getting involved. Now, Daryl and I are the ones who moved the mountains to get answers. But, we didn't get any credit for it. But, you know, the community's happy, because we've got a semi-resolution to it. But, I will know that all of our hard work is happening when people realize we are not Orange County government. We are our own government agency, and we have our own people who can solve our own real estate problems without having to go to county government. So, I just had to say that, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Gordon?
Yes, you had asked about work sessions, and I was going to ask to see, since we're dealing with policies on 5-7, and I was going to just ask the superintendent, is there any way that we could get some type of pre-report? Because I know they've been working on it, on the achievement gap. That's very important. If we're going the way we said we're going to go.
Yes, she asked for a report on the achievement gap and...
Well, I don't want a broad report, we know that. We, I think, you know, I was in that session, and I went through it. And I've had the opportunity to speak with three board members, and I will be meeting with one, the Houston board member, in reference to what they did. And most everybody was giving us pointers on what they focus on. And you do get what you focus on. So, I don't want a broad, I don't want a broad, broad, I don't want a broad report. I just want a broad, broad, they said it's like broad. Broad, yeah, they said like road, broad. Okay, but I don't want their report, I think they've given us enough. I think we're talking, and those that are going, you may want to speak with those four districts that did qualify and made it. And I've already spoken with Houston. So, I want to know, I don't want them, I want to know where we're going, what direction. We know what to do, we just haven't done it all. And it's time for us to close that gap. I've been here 13, going on 13 years, and the gap is not closed. It's not where it used to be. But then, when you have one group passing another group, something's wrong. And we cannot continue to sit on this board and allow any group to leave anybody. All the groups should be going together now, almost together, not to be leapfrogging. And I'm taking that word from Dr. Palm over here. So, we got to find out, we were supposed to do this, and we dropped the ball and didn't. And I think that when we were doing it for those schools that were kind of challenging schools, and they weren't making the call for the state, but now, I think we need to look at the national achievement gap. Because we're not going to go where we want to go. And I know the chairman, he has a major goal that we want to accomplish. And I'd like to help you get there, and I'd like to see Orange County get there. And we are so close, but yet so far. Thank you.
Superintendent?
I apologize, I didn't use the right terminology. Our action plan, based on the site review, largely deals with the achievement gap, and that's what we want to bring to the board. And Mr. Chairman, let me double-check, I believe we can be ready by that date.
And let me just echo some, you know, when we put in performance incentives with our new superintendent for the broad plan, there was a method there. Because, you know, frankly, from when I first learned about the broad plan, and this board did, I shouldn't say I did, when we learned of it years ago, that the primary determinant under becoming a broad finalist, from my perspective, and superintendent, you're the expert on this, so correct me if I'm wrong, you're a broad fellow, but the primary measure is closing the achievement gaps between minority populations, and also between poorer populations and socioeconomic levels. So, you know, that wasn't just put in there to give us kudos, or to give us a pat on the back, although that's a big part of it. Because I think the reputational quality of the award, and what it says about a school district speaks volumes. But, the measures are so very, very important. And those of you, you know, who are able to make, and I know it's at a time that's hard for everybody to make, the state of the schools every year, you know, much to the heartburn of some, I know, in the beginning. But, every year, I report on five broad metrics that, I'll be candid, you know, I just picked a little bit on my own, because it is a state of schools that I'm able to give. But, one of them is closing the minority achievement gap. And I'll be very frank with you, I've had many conversations with the superintendent, and I know she's incredibly committed to this, and she made that clear when we hired her. And that's the one measure of the five that I report on every year, where we have not made, in my opinion, enough progress. It's a very, very hard gap to close. But, I look at other urban districts around this country, and they've made more success than we have. So, I guess I'll just be quiet and turn off my mic. But, I just want to say something, because I think it's important to say, I know Dr. Barbara Jenkins is incredibly committed, and that's been very clear for a year, to close that gap. And I know this whole board is. And we're not going to get to where we want to be as a school board until we can show and prove with objective data that our poorer students, as well as our minority populations, including our ESOL students, are closing the gap between our less poor students in this district.
Well, that was one of my legacy, I'm just saying, that we wanted to leave, because when I came on this board, Mr. Roach will let you know, we were the lowest on the totem pole. We had Fs all over the place. And when we were called in, Rick had to give his, everybody on this board had to sit down and say, and that was what, now, have we made progress? You bet we have. And we don't want to forget our history, and every February, we look back on our history. But, it seemed as if it's a merry-go-round. We talk a good game, we talk about it, but we don't be focused enough to do anything about it. It has not been on this agenda. We talk about it, I've asked about it, that is one of the things, before I leave this board, that we have got to close. We know how to close it, we did not stay focused enough to close it, because it's always something else that jumps in. The building trade, the audit, the hiring, gossip, whatever. But, this is the most focused we have been, but we have not been able to put the attention where it ought to be. And if we are going to get there, every one of those school boards told me, they put that focus on that testing, and they put the focus on working with the lowest-performing students to move them to the top. And they were not just the lowest performing, but they targeted their Hispanics and African-American. And as you go through those reports, from those four finalists, that's all they talk about throughout the report. And then, you know, we're, you know, we're not the lowest on the totem pole, we're kind of high. And I'm going to tell you, they told us that. I'm talking about the other districts, they say, you know, y'all are considered, you know, for them to give us something, we're not the poorest district either. So, that, you know, that's another thing that they look at. But, I thank you for bringing it back to the board, and I thank Dr. Jenkins for her expertise out of Charlotte Mecklenburg, and working with them. And my mentor, for 13 years, one of the school board member there, on that Charlotte Mecklenburg board, that have guided us, and the Houston board, that have guided me along the way, and letting us know we were on the right track when we were moving from all failing schools, and all of our failing schools became A-schools. But, we dropped that focus. And then, we did not even reprimand, you know, those that were involved in those schools, and we just took status quo. When they came and brought a report, I can remember my brother, he came to a board meeting where the failing schools had to report to this board what they were going to do. But, we never asked them to come back to let us know if they did it. And a couple of people were not reappointed, and one of the failing schools ended up having to close. And they were closed by the state. So, I'm requesting that if we are going that route, when these schools are failing, and they present to us what they are going to do, they need to get back in here and show us what they have done. And we have never done that. And I want to commend you, Mr. Chairman, at least we got them coming in. But then, my brother said, "How could you all have accepted any of them?" He said, I'm, you know, he's an educator also, and an educated man. But, he said, "Just to hear them talk about their schools, and what are they going to do, how are they going to come back?" to come back before the board and show us what they have done to change what they were doing? Because if you keep doing what you're doing, you're going to keep getting what you got. And that scares me for May and June with the FCAT 2.0. That really scares me. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gordon. Okay, quickly, and then I'm going to go to Mrs. Gould for a final announcement. Work session schedule, Board members, we have coming up next week, counseling and mental health programs, along with the naming school facilities issue, and also some board policies on advertising and solicitation in schools. Do me a favor, I know some of you at this board table have an intense interest in the counseling issue, and I've asked the staff to get with those of you who I know have an intense interest in it. But all of you, if you have specific issues you want to have addressed, don't miss this opportunity. Get with Kathy Palmer and Vicky Lutrell, I believe, and I'm trying to think, and Dr. Diaz. Dr. Diaz and Vicky Lutrell, I think, are the leads on this presentation. So, I should not have said Kathy, I think it's Dr. Diaz and, oh, Dr. Tovine, I knew I was forgetting somebody. Dr. Gina Tovine's actually the lead on it, on the counseling side, and Dr. Diaz is the lead on it, if I'm not mistaken. Superintendent, is that right, on the mental health side? So, that's coming up very, very quickly. And I've tried to cover with them in the briefings they gave me, the issues that I knew y'all had, and I've asked them to get with you, Mr. Roach. And I think I had omitted this, but Dr. Diaz on the mental health side, if you could get with Ms. Gould as well, because I know that's an area of great interest to her. Then we have that...
Mr. Sablet, just, I just got an email from the President of the Counseling Association who wants to know what she might provide from that group, too. So, whoever's getting in charge, let me know, and I'll forward you that so we can make sure and get all the information when that topic comes up, because this is kind of a great opportunity.
Okay.
So, I mean, I'll help with that.
Yeah. Well, Superintendent says we'll have Dr. Tovine contact her, and, okay. All right, then we have on April 18th, that work session, depending on your availability, is going to start at 3:00, okay? And we hope to be out of here by 6:00. That's on K8, follow-up and digital instructional technology. Board members, we've got a lot of big issues coming to a head here. The K8 follow-up, it's my hope that we walk out of the K8 follow-up work session with some definitive decisions that we can in some way memorialize, because I think the community needs to know as well on some of those issues. And I know that Superintendent and her staff has been working very, very hard on those issues for six months. The digital instructional technology, I will share with you, there's a lot of material to cover on that one. We're going to start with that one because I want to make sure everybody's here for the K8, and we have some folks coming from the public who have an interest in the K8. So, we'll do digital instructional technology, we'll try to be through that one by 4:30, and we'll try to start the K1 at 4:30. Then we have that all-important, and forgive me, I know you all know these are important, I'm editorializing too much, but we have the Facilities Condition Assessment coming on April 25th. That's going to be a lengthy work session, and that, I think, is going to be very, very comprehensive, and I think that's going to drive a lot of our decision-making going forward. And then we have our budgets, you know, we combine those into one meeting because of our lack of work session availability before the summer break, and we have to get through those constitutionally. And so, we have the General Fund and Capital Project Fund budgets coming. We have a bunch of board policies coming on the 7th, and then we have the Customer Service Follow-Up, the Value Added Model, and the ESC Follow-Up. And I think the ESC Follow-Up is going to be a fairly big one as well. Then we have our second budget meeting on the 6th. And then we have a meeting that frankly, tons of people in this community are waiting for, and that I think we're going to get a fair amount of interest in, and that's the Sales Tax Milage Discussion on June 18th. And again, keep in mind and thinking there is you'll have the Facilities Condition Assessment to digest as of late April. So, it's going to be a very, very busy sprint to the finish line before the summer break. Any questions on it? Anything I'm missing, members of the board? Okay, Superintendent, I want to thank you for helping us line all those up, a lot of big things moving. Anything else for the good of the order before I go to Ms. Gould? All right, Ms. Gould, let me turn it over to you.
I now have three things. On Tuesday, I'll just be coming back from NSBA because I'm staying for the tour of the digital school, and my flight doesn't land until 7:30. So, hopefully, I won't completely miss the discussion. I'll come right here, or try to get on an earlier flight if I can. Thursday, the 16th is, oh, it's the 18th. Oh, good, I feel so much better. I thought he said the 16th. The second thing that I wanted to share with you is, as many of you know, St. Luke's is a great partner in, with their impact program in education. Well, they're going to a whole other level in community stabilization, following some of what's going on with the council that you just reported on, Mrs. Gordon. But they are having some events on the 26th and 27th that are open to all community leaders and community participants, focusing on neighborhood stabilization, education. They'll be going through the map, which I had actually seen this past Sunday at a meeting at the church, as well as a dinner on Saturday night that I hope you all got an invitation to, if you haven't, you will, with a major speaker, Bob Lupton, who wrote the book on toxic charity and in some of the impacts there. So, if you can make it for any part of that, I will, I'm going to try to make it for as much as I can, and I can report back. But it's a great initiative that they're taking and another model that they're looking at from National Things. And then, my last thing is actually quite sad, especially for me, because this was a personal friend. We lost an amazing community leader and actually a past colleague of OCPS last week, Daniel Pietro. Dan is a philanthropist, businessman, mentor, dear friend. He started the electrical program at Westside Vo-Tech and never forgot his roots, and has not only supported Westside Vo-Tech, but the kids of our community in big and small ways through his entire life, and is leaving a legacy behind that will hopefully continue that, that was his intent. He had a lovely service last week, even though they went against his wishes, and I think he messed up some of it because some of the presentation didn't work the way it was supposed to, because it wasn't what he planned. But he was truly one of the great community leaders that dug in and just saw the good in people and tried to foster that throughout, and will be dearly, dearly missed. And I just wanted to share that with you, and please keep his family and your thoughts and prayers, and honor him with all the service that he's given. Thanks.
Yeah, I just want to echo that, I think a lot of us up here do. I didn't actually realize that Mr. Pietro had passed until far after the fact, and he was, without exception, probably one of the most kind-hearted, generous men that I'd ever met in my life, and extremely successful, and would open up his checkbook, his resources, as hard as treasure for anybody in his community on almost every initiative. And it's rare that you meet somebody like that in any community, and he was a very special person. And it's very, very sad to me that he has passed away because I didn't even know he was ill, and I think he kept it very, very quiet for the longest time.
Yeah, it was, it's public knowledge now, but he ended up getting a very aggressive form of melanoma that attacked him from the inside, and he ended up with multiple brain tumors, and then it went through his system. And so, with all the technology that we could put at his disposal, and he had many people working as advocates, including congressional representatives, to try to get him any kind of help, it just, it just beat him. And he was honored at a function with West Orange County where they've named an award for him, and he was the first recipient. That night, we thought he was going to be fine, and a month later, he was, he wasn't. So, it was very sad, but thank you.
Being a cancer survivor, cancer sucks, as Facebook says. And, you know, it circles around every so often, and it says, "Like it." And it really does, because cancer takes some really, really good people who don't deserve to leave this world with cancer.
All right, well, thank you, everybody. Go ahead and hug your families.
MIT.
Caltech.
Columbia.
Our advantage: support at home, plus great teachers and programs at Orange County Public Schools. Check out what's available for your child.
There are magnet programs, advanced placement and honors classes, and guidance counselors who help us choose the right courses.
There are dual enrollment classes with Valencia College, so students can earn college credit while in high school.
OCPS has programs for every type of learner, pre-kindergarten through adult.
You won't believe what you can do through Orange County Public Schools.
For more information, visit the website at ocpss.net or call 407-317-3200.
Here's a question for every parent out there. If you could fast-forward 20 years to see how your kid's doing in life, would you do it? Well, we can't time travel yet, but we can see the future better with the new Common Core State Standards in our schools. They set clear goals for every stage of learning, and they're the same for everyone, no matter what zip code you're in. So, you can be sure your student is really grasping what she needs to know to get to graduation and beyond. Find out how it all works at commoncoreworks.org.